Town and Carver Planning Board Meeting of December 18th, 2012. Meeting Room 4 this evening. If we could all stand to...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Foswell, could we all remain standing just for a quick moment of silence? For the children. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
All right. Under Old Business tonight, we have Rocky Meadow Development Corporation Form A. They are here. I don't see the engineer here. I would really like him here to explain. I can do it, but I think it'd be better... And in your packets, most of your packets, you have the Form A still in it on the side in the sleeve, and then you have a small drawing of it. So I'd like to table this until we find him.
Okay.
But I'd like... You're gonna need to act on it today, but let's see if he can show up. Maybe he's upstairs. He might think that's... I don't know where it is. Under New Business, we have a 7:15... Not the Community Development Strategy. It's not 7:15 yet, so maybe we could go on to Spring Street? Well, I was gonna give you a PowerPoint presentation, and I'm told that what I sent you in email was corrupt. I apologize. Essentially, over the last year and a half, the Business Development Committee has been working with SERPES on looking at possible rezoning of state land along the Spring Street Route 44 interchange. And they had a wonderful analysis done by SERPES, and it really brings to light what could possibly happen there. And with the advent of Cisco there, at least the BDC, and it seems like the Selectmen are at least on board at this point. The state, after 44 was completed, had surplus land. And we approached the Selectmen of the state, maybe three years ago, and said, "Gee, we'd like to work with you on taking advantage of this surplus land so that we can get a preferred developer and maybe actually get some tax revenue and tax dollars on good development in that interchange." And at first, the state said, "No, we want to keep the land. We're not gonna make a surplus." But then they later approached us and said, "You come up with a game plan that the town will buy into, rezone the land, and then we'll partner with you to try to find the highest investees." So there's probably about 45 acres there. Its access is already there. And I'm gonna leave it at that. I wish I had the PowerPoint, but it doesn't seem to be working right now. I apologize. A little busy today. And again, I have no secretarial help. But on January... I'll get the right date. On January 14th, the BDC is gonna have a public forum on this. They already had one about a year ago. They're gonna have a second one on January 14th at 7:00 PM up in Selectman's Room. And we're gonna invite all the neighbors again, and all the boards and commissions, and certainly invite you guys. And then hopefully I'll have the PowerPoint working, and we can build it. But I don't know if Will, who's a member of BDC, has anything to add.
Yeah, thanks, Jack. I think what's really important, especially for the residents at home, the initial meeting that we had was prior to any fine tuning, getting close to what you'll see in the presentation. We didn't really have that big of an turnout, but we did have, you know, some of the directors that have a lot of the property there. We took whatever comments that we had there back, and we got a better game plan on what could potentially happen there. I've been saying for a long time that, you know, when we found out that Cisco wasn't gonna come to Carver and they were going to Plimpton, I've been advocating back and forth that the spin-off effect of a company of that caliber, what they bring to the area and the community, we should take advantage of it. And Spring Street is a great asset that we have and that we should pursue. Also, I'm saying with Whitworth's property in North Carver. Starting to see some movement up in North Carver. You know, different people have changed hands, and different things are starting to happen up there. So the more the residents can come out and help us through this process and give us, you know, more input, the better off we'll be and the better plan that we'll have in place to bring back to the state. We're encouraged. We were encouraged by the presentation that we had in front of the Selectmen, and their input was great. And they're all for us to keep moving. And like Jack said, it would've been nice to bring you guys up and show you the plans and all that other stuff, but we can do that at our meeting at BDC. We look forward to keep working on it. That's what we do.
Is water available up there? Or can it be made available? It's interesting, Mr. Chairman, that you mention that. I was approached by the water operator company. They're called Kohler and Colletano. And they built the public water supply there for Cisco. And they don't use anywhere near what they're permitted for. And I had a discussion with him about the likelihood of possibly bringing it down to this area. And he, at first, said he talked to Cisco, and they were a little skittish about it. But then I saw him, I don't know, maybe three weeks ago, and he said they're starting to think about this now, that there may be some advantages for them as well to bring water. It would have to go onto 44, and then you'd be right there. If I had the slides, you could see it better. Technology. I was too much in a rush today. So the 14th will have this working.
So this would be an example where we could use that television?
Oh, yes. It would be awesome.
That would be awesome.
Wouldn't have to worry about this.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Here, two minutes. Well, we could go to... Where could we go to? We have a couple of minutes. Planning Board notes under Other Business.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I'd like to thank the chairman for his participation and representation of the planning board at town meeting, you know, sponsoring the article and bringing the article forward for the solar bylaw. I greatly appreciate that. And I do appreciate, and I wanna note out there that, you know, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Tabolski, Mr. Tracy, Mr. Nowlan, you know, talking about it, moving it forward, and the community acting on it. We have a great bylaw that's in place. And I just wanna say, for me personally, it's great. We appreciate it, all the hard work that everybody's done, and thank you very much.
Well, we also appreciate the work that you and your committee did to be able to bring this to town meeting, although it was changed somewhat. But it's still a terrific bylaw, I think, and should work well in town. All right, now, being 7:15, we can go on to New Business, the Community Development Strategy. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we are wrapping up our Community Development Lot Grant Program that we think was very successful. I think we helped 19 houses, Darlene?
Eighteen.
Eighteen houses.
Eleven in Carver.
Eleven in Carver, seven in Halifax. And tomorrow is the last day of the grant. Darlene, as you know, works on the grant, and tomorrow's her last day. And we're closing out technically on the 31st of December. But we are going to apply again. And one of the criteria before you apply is to have a public meeting on what we call a Community Development Strategy. And we did this three years ago. And three years ago, what I did was I took the master plan. I took the North Carver water study we did, and the North Carver rezoning study we did. I took the open space plan and the housing plan that the local Housing Partnership did. And I put those all into this document and used their priorities. And that's how we came up with the rehab program, and we really started zeroing in on Crystal Lake and Bates Pond. This year, we also have to do this strategy. And we, as a committee, we have a committee of myself and the two town administrators, and the two building commissioners, and two residents from both towns. We decided we would like to expand this program and expand it to the Great Meadow Neighborhood in North Carver. There's... It's getting to be an older community. There's quite a bit of foreclosures there and issues there. We also wanna expand it to South Carver, particularly targeting Pine Tree Village and Cranberry Village. And we've been working... I've met with the board of directors of both villages. As you know, they now own their villages. Mr. Piper sold it to them. And they're very, very excited about this. We've also done a mailing to both, all the new areas, looking for what we call a pre-application. And that pre-application kind of gives us an idea of what the needs are and how much of a need there is. And we're gonna team with Halifax again. Because we need to be even more competitive than we were three years ago, we will get additional points if we add an additional activity. And the one we, after talking to these groups, the one we're gonna add is childcare. Where we will, if you qualify... Qualify means you gotta be 80% of median income. You will get a childcare voucher if you use that childcare voucher for work or school. It's not just so you can stay home and watch TV. And when we reached out to the two villages, especially Pine Tree, obviously, they were very excited about this. There's a big need for childcare. And we've reached out to, God, about four... How many childcare agencies?
Oh, my gosh. Eighty-four.
Eighty-four childcare agencies. You'd be shocked how many people are running childcare. Now, this could be at someone's home, or three or four. Or it could be a big deal like Cranberry Childcare up in Landmark. So I thought, before we get into this, I'd just give you a little outline. The introduction kind of just tells you about what we're thinking about and how we wanna expand it. We talk about water and wastewater strategies about... And this is right from the land use, the North Carver land use study. We wanna promote tourism. We wanna support the local cranberry industry. Promote Carver as a location for green businesses and technologies. We wanna keep using our expedited permitting. We wanna particularly look at North Carver for economic development and to continue to look at South Carver, which I think is something that we haven't paid enough attention to. The tax rate is an ongoing issue in this town because of the split tax rate, and then childcare. Childcare is actually an aid to economic development. Because if you can offer good childcare, people can work. Employers like coming to towns where their people can be accommodated. In the housing, we haven't really changed this. This is all the goals. And at the end, I'll kind of paraphrase these. Talking about inclusionary zoning and a wide range of housing types and modifying accessory apartments, which we've been through a lot, and those type of things. Transportation, development of 58, which we are now doing. And then looking at creating bike paths. We now have a bike path committee. And then with the open space plan is really to maintain world character, preserve our natural resources, increase access to these recreational facilities, and develop definitive strategies that will affect change in town policy regarding open space. And then we had one, and I got this... I should add that I sent a draft of this to all the department heads, and I got responses from the school department, from the COA, and from the library. And the quality of what we call quality of life is to expand elderly services, which we are doing with our new COA, the renovated COA. Develop youth at risk counseling and transportation services. We heard this at Pine Tree Village where kids don't have any place to go. And now we're getting a new Boys and Girls Club. They wanna know, well, is there gonna be transportation to get there? Like after school, when kids get out of school, are they gonna be able to take a bus or a van right to the Boys and Girls Club? And then a bus and a van home, and that kind of stuff. And then develop more opportunities for childcare. And then all of these are listed into priorities. Housing rehabilitation, master plan for infrastructure, down payment assistance, permanent protection of open space, acquisition of open space, foreclosure intervention, developing Green Industrial Park in North Carver, Route 58 improvements, neighborhood septic and well improvements, senior center improvements, public transit to MBTA in Middleworld. Support local cranberry industry, increase affordable housing inventory, encourage green technologies and childcare subsidies. So that's what we have so far. Now, I just wanna get some of your comments. What we're gonna do with this is I'm gonna incorporate anything you'd like to have in there. And if the public was here, I could do that. Then I'm gonna ask you at your next meeting on January 15th to have what they call an official public hearing, where we'll advertise this in the newspaper and take testimony. Then we'll finalize this and incorporate it into the application, which is due in February something around... February 14th or 12th or something like that. So we did this last year. I didn't do it with the planning board. We did these separately. But I just thought it'd be a good idea to have the planning board involved. And I wouldn't mind, Darlene, if we had the planning board sign the sign-in sheet so we have proof that they were here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Will.
Can I just comment and maybe give some thoughts? You said that you're... The process is trying to expand it to a couple places in Carver. What about Halifax? Are they...
No, they're gonna stay the same. And the reason they are is because they hit a lottery, and they had... I need Darlene's help. Eighty people, I think, in their lottery?
Excellent. And there's approximately 50 remaining.
And there's still 50 remaining.
And we exhausted the list in Carver.
Oh, that's wonderful. I think that the areas that you're picking is a good pick. Economic development, one of the things that I want, that you probably ought to mention is the Spring Street.
Oh, excellent idea.
Also, you should mention the... I see that you have the South Carver infrastructure, but you should show that the economic developments in conjunction with area businesses that are in need of water potential of South Carver with one of the largest tax bands. I'll sign this in a second.
Got it.
The other thing that I had, I do like the idea of the childcare. I think that is a great opportunity for not only the town, but also gives the Boys and Girls Club some avenues.
Yep.
And you should spell that out in there with the Boys and Girls Club, the investment that's been made from a local owner in the town, converting the Boys and Girls Club. The asset between Pine Tree Village and that, how that would all tie in. I think that's a great tie-in, a great walk.
Got it. Great idea.
I'd like to emphasize a little bit more on the housing end of it, where you guys had established that housing trust on, especially the foreclosure, how successful that you guys have been. How many families that we've been able to help in the town? I think that would show that you guys have gone beyond your scope, came up with better creative ideas. The town in itself has helped us, even helped our own, in how that's worked with CPA and all that other stuff. I think that would be good. I'm sure that you're gonna be utilizing the Route 58 infrastructure and what will be happening with the new sidewalks and also the bike path, which Chad's involved with and stuff like that. I think those should be highlighted in there. It shows a community in motion, a community working together. I should stop.
You should quit your day job and help me.
I just think that there's been an awful lot done in a short amount of time in this program that we got... How much did you get?
$685,000.
But the total grant was how much between the two towns?
$685,000.
So with that, I mean, we've done an awful lot and helped our citizens an awful lot in the town. And it's a great program that you guys ran. It's been run very well. And I think if we're gonna try to do it again, we should highlight the successes that we've had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to say? Bruce Marie?
Will cover it.
Chad?
We've got it all.
Will covered it all.
I think you did. As far as me, yeah, Will did take... Being on the Local Housing Partnership, we have done a lot for the... Well, we have helped some families for the foreclosure intervention. And we also are coming up with different types of programs to increase the affordable housing inventory, maybe rescuing some of the homes that are in foreclosure now or abandoned. And then those are plans that we have going now, and hopefully... We're looking for assistance.
Mr. Chair, if I could just butt in. The apartments above some of our commercial spaces, that's been pretty successful. And where they're looking to expand in Carver Square, there's been some talk about that. That could help us in this avenue. I think that's a good... Anything that we can grab to show them. The town has moved such broad aspects on this grant. I think that there's been a lot done, and you guys have done a great job. If we can do some more, I think it's great.
You're not giving Bruce enough credit. He is the chairman of the...
I was looking right at him.
These are great, you know. I realize when Will and you guys are talking that I didn't give enough credence to the things we've done. It's like anything that we should be doing instead of what we've accomplished.
Yeah, a lot of different aspects from different committees and stuff that have come together. And, you know, we're very fortunate to get the grant and be able to be ready to utilize it and be that successful says a lot, especially for the community. It's really, really well done.
And we're going to ask for $900,000 this year, which is the max.
Perfect.
And we do think we've run a good program. And we're told, and we had a perfect audit by the HCD, and we're told that combined with how we used our money and we lot leveraged... And Darlene is the grant clerk, so she knows more about this than I do, how we leveraged that $685,000 to who knows how much. We probably hundreds, another $100,000 using all kinds of different agencies' monies, including the redevelopment authority's money.
SMOAT.
SMOAT, Elderly Services, USDA...
USDA and...
Habitat.
Yes, yes.
Habitat, so...
Amazing.
It is amazing.
Well, good job.
All right, so good. That's all I needed. I need that for the minute. We have our sign-in sheet. We can get Evan to sign in the sheet. It would be nice.
My apologies. I was upstairs. They were having an executive session, so I was just waiting. And I didn't realize until they would announce.
We'll get Fran to sign too. Yeah, we'll get Fran to sign. What did I do now?
An itemless thing.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on now. We can go to the Old Business of Rocky Meadow Development Corporation, Form A.
For the record, Evan Watson from Prime Engineering representing Rocky Meadow Development Corporation.
Excuse me.
Gotta open the hearing. Sorry. Go ahead.
No, it's not a hearing.
Oh, okay.
No, I was... Someone distracted me, that's all.
That's okay. Basically, a Form A plan was submitted to the town clerk last meeting. It was presented to the board. And here we are, just presenting the plan. Basically, this is the Rocky Meadow property that we're all familiar with here. Right now, it's essentially two lots here and this one large lot. So we have this project going on here, so they wanted to separate that from the majority of the property. And then there was a little strip of here that we were gonna create to combine with another lot. That's basically it. In a nutshell, there's no new subdivision. There's no new ways. There's no new roads or anything being created. And I think, Jack, you might have had some comment that right now, this lot would not have frontage points taken in this manner here. But the plan indicates the purpose is this plan is divide Lot 105 and Lot 107. It's shown in previous plans referencing Note 3 into lots 105A, 105B, et cetera. They do not have adequate frontage and are intended to be combined with land of abode shown here on as map 55, Lot 1-7, and map 56, Lot 314, which is here.
And who owns those two lots?
Right now, this is owned by one of the owners.
Same owners, yep.
Yep. And then this lot is owned by one of the aboders.
Okay. So the two top lots, the big lots... I don't have a map. Yeah, that one into the right, that's currently one lot.
That's current.
And you're subdividing it. The one on the left has frontage on purchase. It's pretty easy to see. And the one on the right has frontage because the same owner owns a contiguous lot there.
And they're combining that lot?
And they're combining that.
It's to be combined, yeah. But in order to combine it, the lot needs to be created.
Right, defined.
That's right.
So tonight, if we approve this, that will happen.
What will have to happen is there'll be a transfer by deed, which will reference this plan. The signing of the plan does not actually combine the two lots.
Right. And when he records it.
Right.
And then the assessors will get it eventually.
And then this lot here will still... This also has frontage.
It's pre-existing, yep.
Right.
Could you just review for me, please, the little piece?
This piece right here?
Yes.
It's essentially 20 feet wide by about 300 feet long. Contains just under 6,000 square feet.
And that's gonna stay status quo?
I believe the intent is to... Well, according to Note 1, it'd be combined with this lot here. So this is a pre-existing.
With Lot 105 or 105B?
105B.
Okay.
Well, 55/1-7. Lot 105B is the lot that's being created. It's annotated inside that lot.
Okay.
Anybody have any comments? Anything to say?
They don't need to be with the former.
Right, I'm sorry. You're right.
Yeah, there's nothing unusual here that's a pretty common piece, even though that larger lot on the west side or east side doesn't have any frontage. It's gonna be combined with another lot that does, so that's fine. It's nothing that I haven't done before myself. Surveyors are very clever. All right. We do have the mile on the NSC. Jack provided two convenient pens.
Motion to endorse?
Second.
We have a motion to endorse in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Do you wanna take the mile or with you?
That'd be great.
Yeah, great. Then they'll go over.
Yeah, I was waiting upstairs in the hallway for a good half hour.
I suspected that, but we had something else to do and then I was going to go up and get you.
Oh, thanks, okay.
Because Rich told me you were coming.
Yeah, yeah, he was just here.
Okay, perfect, fine.
All right, so, can we go on to other business, E, planners' notes?
Yeah, if you go to E, I put in the budget, this is something that we do at this point. I just submit it to the town administrator. Then what happens is he will call me in for a meeting, it used to be with the town accountant, but we don't have one yet. Then he will then go through the budget, make his recommendations, and then the selectmen will have a hearing, probably in April, I imagine. And then obviously go to the finance committee and have a town meeting. If you look...
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good holiday.
Yeah, you too, Merry Christmas.
The only thing I've changed on this from any year is I added another $500 to the seminar and training. Mostly because we took out monies for several years in a row, and I took them all out of seminar and training, and it's very difficult to go to seminar and training without some money in the budget. So I added $500. That's essentially the only thing. And I just thought you should see it. I know Mr. Sinclair, I believe, has a comment.
Oh, yeah, okay, just saying.
Thank you, Jack. Mr. Chairman, I know I've been crying, I've been crying about this for probably a year now, so I'm going to make it public. If people don't know, this board and other boards had their stipends cut in half many years ago, four years ago. Maybe even a little bit longer. Other boards, and I'm not going to mention any names, have had that, has had them been Other elected officials in the town have gotten raises. And I want ours to be reinstated to back where it was. I think it's only fair. I think when people do as much work as this board does, and I'm not being unreasonable by any means. So I'd like that in the budget. And I've talked to Jack about it, I've talked to the town administrator about it. I mentioned it more than twice, if not 10, 15 times. In my opinion, it's just simple. If you can increase stipends for other departments, you can give raises to elected officials in thousands of dollars, you can bring our stipends back to where they should be at. We're not set any different from any of the other ones. And in my opinion, this board does a lot more, and a lot more work that isn't just in front of this board, but on the outside. The commitment that comes from each member of this board is without saying. So I think that should be in the budget, and I'll argue with it, and I'll state our case, but that should definitely be added. I'll make a motion to bring it back to what it was.
And just if I, go ahead, Jack, now 1,500, I mean, $3,500 per year, so you want it to go to 7,000?
Yep. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. For those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll let you know when the hearings are and all that junk. Well, it's always away, yeah.
If I could just say, I know people see us here once, twice a month on TV, but a lot of people have other committees, several committees, they spend many, many nights here at Town Hall. I go to talk for syrup head and the chairman of the local housing partnership, so when I took this job, my wife said, geez, I didn't know that you were going to be married to Town Hall, but it's, I thought you were married to me, but we do spend a lot of time here. So I think that what Will says is, has a lot of truth, makes a lot of sense. I just wanted to say that.
Thanks, Bruce.
All right.
I got a couple real quick. I do expect Deekes to finally come in with their sewage treatment plant in January. They've been delayed because Con's Tom was delayed. They had a quorum issue, I believe that's been settled now. And the only other thing is, you know, you see Dunkin' Donuts being built, but been working with the property across the street from Dunkin' Donuts, and I know they're under purchase and sale, so hopefully something will happen with that. And I just had a meeting today with Will under his capacity as chairman of the redevelopment authority with a prospective purchaser of the lot across from Compton Farms, which was the old Mizzou Lee farm. And so it's a little complicated, but we're trying to get that to move, and it'd be a great addition to this town. So that's what we're working on, amongst a million other things.
It's good to have things to work on, it seems like things are picking up, so.
Oh, and I'll let you, I believe you mentioned that, Mr. Chairman. If you look in the budget, I think the narratives, the narratives might not have printed out. But one of the things that they asked me to do, I don't think they printed out, is, no, they didn't. I'll get this to you, but I went through all the permits and we've gone up to almost 65% in the number of permits from last year, from 2011 calendar year to 2012. And everything, every permit, form A's, B's, C's, special permits, signs, minor modifications, you name it, it's gone up. And it's, you know, it's an indication the economy is coming around. Maybe not like it was five or six, seven years ago.
Till we fall off the cliff.
That's right.
No, we're still climbing.
It's all going to end Friday anyway.
Perfect.
Is it Friday or Saturday?
It's a Friday.
All right, the next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for December 4th.
Make a motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I want to know if they were Darlene's first minute.
Good job, darling.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I just was talking to Jack before the meeting's end, I read the notes and they were great. Thank you very much for that. All right, correspondence.
I don't have any, except that I did want to say, you know, I think I do this every year, what an honor and a pleasure it is working for you guys. This year has been a tough one, and a lot of decisions you had to make and compelled to make, and maybe you didn't really want to make, but you have to follow the law. And I think that shows exactly, exactly what kind of people you are and how you really believe in this town. It's been a pleasure and an honor working for you. And I hope you have a great Christmas and holiday.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. And before we adjourn, going to adjournment, I would like to wish everybody on the board Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I would like to also send that out to the people watching the show. Have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the same to you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
And a motion and a second to adjourn.